All right, we'll call the meeting to order. It's seven o'clock. We'll call all board members that are in attendance with Vicki, Marina, and Robert. I will start with the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, the mission statement, the Baroka area school district provides a quality education for all students that inspires continuous learning, positive relationships, curiosity and compassion in an environment that welcomes diversity while developing respectful and responsible citizens even with COVID. That's not in there, but maybe today it should be added. And I'd like to begin, we have three new administrators to our district. And so I would like them to introduce themselves, tell us a little bit about themselves. I will start with Tom Burkhalter.
All right, Tom Burkhalter, new district administrator. I come here after three years in the Clintonville School District, the last two as their elementary principal. I'm extremely excited to move to the Baroka area and I actually am closing out a house hopefully in the next two weeks in town here. So I'm very excited to move my family and so I've been married to my wife Kim for nine years. And I have a six-year-old, a four-year-old, and a one-year-old, so we are bored all the time. Clearly, extremely excited to be here.
You're welcome. Thank you. Kathy, you want to go next? Kathy Reed?
I'm Kathy Reed. I'm the Student Services Director. This is coming home for me. I graduated from here, I taught here. And then the past four years, I was the Special Ed Director in Prairie Sheen High, Prairie Sheen Schools. So I'm very excited to be coming home.
Welcome. Welcome back. We're glad to have you. Pat Olbert?
Yeah, thank you. Pat Olbert, I'm the elementary and Montessori principal. From Sparta, still live in Sparta, taught six years in Sparta, was principal for eight years in Sparta. But again, like Tom said, I'm super excited for this challenge and this opportunity. I feel like sometimes you gotta go outside your comfort zone a little bit to keep learning and growing. You know, I just told Tom that today it feels like, in some ways, it feels like I've been here for a year and some it feels like it's my first day. But super excited. My family came down and treated me to dinner tonight, which is cool before the meeting. So I'm married with two kids, 14 and 11. All is well.
You're welcome. And the board does have a gift for all of you and it's all local products from the area. So fruits, vegetables, cheeses, crackers, pancakes, not beer. Some sodas and juices and there's just a lot of good things from this area. And so we wanted to welcome you with something from this area. So I'd also like to thank you all for the work, not just the three of you, but also Mike and Jason and John, Beth, for all the work that you're doing. I know it's tremendous right now, lots of hours. And I want to thank you for what you're doing to create a positive learning environment that's safe for all of our staff and students and community members. So thank you for that. The next item is Spotlight on Education, Title I Schoolwide Plan Summary. We have Krista Woodward, Amy Clements, Marlene Blatt, Christian Dab, and Leanne and Maryann. And I don't know how you want to start. People can't hear me very well, so that's why I don't have this on all the time. Go ahead.
Hello. You've probably been hearing about our Title I Schoolwide Plan.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Krista Woodward, Curriculum and Instruction Coordinator. And I'm here to kick us off and do a little introduction and then we have a lot of information. We try to keep it concise, but we put a lot of time and a lot of thought into the details. Not all the details, but the framework, let's just say. And so we would like to share our updates with you. Starting back in January, we had the support of a CISA person along with a big representative group of our elementary staff to begin reviewing and working on our title plan. We had regular meetings throughout the school year until the closing and we continued by and through once we were closed. We defined, ended up defining three goals in the end. And the rest of our group here is going to help kind of walk through the process that we took and also the actions that we proposed for the next year. Next up is Marlene. With the next slide.
Thank you, Krista. My name is Marlene Blatt and I'm a new retiree, but I've been in title, I've been in multiple positions here in the district. And I wanted to finish up my work with this group because they're such a good group to work with as are all the elementary teachers and staff. And Title I is near and dear to my heart. And so first, we're going to start off, I wanted to tell you the difference between school-wide programs and targeted assistance title programs. So our first step in revising our title plan was to discover and learn about the two types of programs that are available, both cover reading, language arts. How they differ is in the delivery of services and the students that are served. And so if we start with the school-wide program, you can see that it's designed to upgrade the entire school. It's to uplift the entire program. It affects all the students. We have contact with all the students in school. Whereas the targeted assistance program is specifically focused on those students who have been assessed and show the greatest need. We are the gurus of reading and so they take the most qualified to reach the most need. And so it only affects the identified students in school. And so after we took a look at the two different programs, we came to realize that there was a need to overhaul our existing plan to bring us into compliance with GPI. And so our next step was to examine our current Title I plan. And so last year, this is just looking at last year, 2019 and '20, our Title I efforts, the staff served, oh, this is different. Served, let's see. Nope, nope, no bad. That's good. That's good. So I'm just going to put in a different order. So we serve students in both reading, language arts, and math, one or the other, or both. 106 students were served through intensive intervention. This was 30 minutes, generally 30 minutes of time in which students were pulled from the classroom and they received supplemental instruction above and beyond what the classroom instruction was. And so that was about half of our day with intensive interventions using research-based programs. And the other half of our day was with win time. Win is what I need. And that was also a 30-minute designated block that was targeted instruction for reading and language arts. And that was in grades one, four. And those title services were provided by two full-time teachers, one of which was our reading specialist, the other is myself, one full-time para, and then two half-time teachers. Next. So analyzing student academic achievement, culture, systems, and parent and family engagement. This was the next step in developing our school-wide improvement plan. We knew that that was the direction we needed to go and so these were the areas that we looked at. First, to determine our student academic achievement, we looked at the forward test from the last three years. In examining our school culture, we revisited the results of a school-wide implementation review, an assessment that all, well, not an assessment, a survey that all staff took this last year. And then to consider our systems, we revisited a PLC audit, a professional learning community audit, and looked at that. And then to learn more about our family and parents' engagement, we looked at a lot of different variety of sources. And we found that all four areas have needs. And this task was a huge undertaking that yielded that discovery. However, experience has taught us that we can't do it all at once. So our three goals, which you'll see in a little bit, will focus on our area, what we felt of greatest need. And that one that is near and dear to our hearts is our students and their academic achievement. And so Leanne, via Zoom, is going to tell you a little bit next about some of the data from our school report card.
Yes, thank you, Marlene. Are you all able to hear me? Is that made clear? Okay, all right. So like Marlene said, I do have two Wisconsin Forward charts to share with you guys. And we use these same charts when we were working on completing our needs assessment. So this first chart shows the overall proficiency of students across three years in ELA and math. And just generally speaking, we can see that student ELA proficiency decreased by 5% and math proficiency decreased by 8%. And as we were looking at this information as a small group and also when we shared and talked about this information as a whole staff, we were surprised to see this data and really agree that, you know, this is not what we want to see for our school and for our students. So going on to the student subgroups. We also examined this data. And so students who fall into one of these subgroups have an even lower rate of proficiency when compared to overall student proficiency. You'll see that there is an asterisk there for students with disabilities for several years. And that just means that there were not enough students in this subgroup to report that subgroup data. And so we just have the 18 and 19 information to look at. So again, you know, I think this goes without saying, but we want to see a student proficiency improve and believe that this is a collective effort. And Christian will talk about that collective effort in our goals and strategies.
Thank you, Leanne. Hopefully you can all hear me okay. I thought this is good practice, getting used to delivering and speaking to a group and speaking clearly and even hopefully figuring out ways that our students can tell that we're smiling at them behind these masks. So I'm nervous that this is my chance to speak in front of a group with a mask on. So as Marlene said, we created goals that we thought would focus, prioritize student growth and achievement what's nearest and dearest to our hearts. Have you had a chance to read our goals? Then I'm not going to read them to you. Instead, I'm just going to talk about what we prioritized in these goals. So as you read through the three goals, you probably noticed that the goals have a strong emphasis on collaborative instructional teams and the adult practices, what we do and how we work together as teachers. And there's considerable research and evidence that supports that data-driven conversations, collaboration, and instructional team planning can have great impact on student growth and achievement. So when you look at goal number one, it prioritizes frequent, consistent, and structured opportunities for instructional teams to have those really important conversations, share our knowledge and experience and expertise to continually develop and improve our practices, which research shows will result in more effective instruction and have greater impact on the student achievement. Goal number two prioritizes instructional teams working together to analyze student assessment data. Research also supports and shows that teams need to take a deep dive into data-driven conversations to make instructional decisions and guide instruction resulting in greater student growth. So we've always collaborated, we've always worked together. We're really prioritizing using the data, using these common formative assessments, laying them out hopefully on a weekly basis, looking at them, discussing them together, and making decisions as a team versus teachers alone in a room, looking at it, figuring out the instructional planning. We think it's going to be a much greater impact in this teamwork that we're doing. You probably noticed that last line about supplemental instruction as measured by a locally created pre- and post-survey. That's on our to-do list. That's coming. But we plan on creating this pre- and post-survey at a later date, which will be based, obviously, on the teaching environment and circumstances that we meet in the fall. There's still unknowns. So what that survey will look like to accurately reflect how we're working together and what we're doing in the classroom. So that's on our to-do list. Goal number three prioritizes universal small group instruction in the classroom. So recognizing that the small group instruction is very impactful and delivering it universally, as Marlene said at the beginning. This is about having the greatest impact on our whole, all of our students. And we see it as we're wanting to flood each grade level with the experts. As Marlene called them, the gurus of reading and math, so that we're working together. And what that's going to do is create a much more diverse team, working together to develop the best instruction. So we see a need to have flexible small groups that are consistently adjusted and grouped based on student need and growth. So by consistently looking at the data, making the adjustments, we can regroup them in more frequent cycles. And we also think that will impact growth and achievement. And I think I said this, but I'll just repeat it, this goal also prioritizes the importance of having a diverse team of educators collaborating to plan and deliver high-quality instruction in small groups in the classroom. So those are our goals. That's a little bit about why we prioritize those. And we've been working hard, so we have strategies to help us achieve those goals. And Amy is going to present on that.
All right, so again, I'm not going to read through the goals again, but we have them displayed there for you. A reminder for you, a lot of these items, Christian kind of explained a little bit because they are the reasons behind choosing the goals, but I'm going to go through some of the other strategies as well. So for goal number one, we talked a lot about the master schedule. Christian talked a lot about, hey, you know, having those meetings and hopefully weekly meetings. But we have to have a schedule that works for us in order for all those people to be present during those meetings. So creating a master schedule to reflect that, again, hopefully weekly. Also identifying who those team members are, because it is important that they are all present in order to use everybody's skills and the knowledge that they contain, not only their background knowledge for the curriculum, but also for each student. So we talked about that, including our gurus or our title staff, but also our special education teachers, depending on the grade level. Each grade is obviously different. But in order for these meetings to be successful, obviously, we need everybody there, but we need everybody trained to have a proper PLC. Yes, we currently have these meetings happening weekly with a smaller team, but we need to make them super effective. And there is training that CISA does provide, so we would look into utilizing their services to create a stronger PLC community. And lastly, for goal number one, we need to identify, train, and coach around high-quality instruction in both literacy and math. And again, CISA can be utilized for this through embedded professional development and coaching. There you go. Goal number two. Again, this one, we need to communicate how those universal screening measures are happening and we need to implement them school-wide. So that's what Marlene was previously talking about, those students that are identified to be in these pull-out groups. We still are going to utilize those systems and screeners to prioritize who those students are. But we need to dig a little bit deeper into those screeners, including the second one, being able to look at that data, which requires training again. It's one thing to look at the data and see the numbers point blank, but to be able to dig in and understand how are we going to go forth with this data. Again, training and provide instructional coaching around the Reading Strategies book, which is a resource that we currently have that is for guiding and supporting needs for students. I believe it was four years ago, Sarah Thompson, when she was our reading specialist, she was able to purchase a Reading Strategies book for each teacher. So we currently already have this resource, but we need to do some training on it to utilize it more properly. And then lastly, for goal number two, we need to train and support educators through coaching to implement assessment sources like running records, conferring notes, and readers. So again, using what we already have, we don't want to recreate the wheel, but using what we have and digging deeper into that through training and coaching. And then our last goal, goal number three, the strategy that we're going to use to achieve this goal is to provide ongoing professional development and best practices for small group instruction. That's the core of goal number three, is that small group instruction. Again, utilizing the Reading Strategies book. We also would like to provide training and coaching on intentional cooperative co-teaching models because, as Christian mentioned, we're going to try the flooding into the classroom, which means bringing an extra educator into that classroom and being able to utilize a co-teaching model that are in there. We also need to reduce the number of ELOs, which are essential learning outcomes in both ELA and math, to fewer than 10. We have been working on this process. Chris has been a rock star helping us narrow down our ELOs. So we've done that once, but we need to do it again to make them even smaller, to really dig into those core standards that we really want them to learn. Especially now with potential online teaching and whatnot, we really need to focus on what is the priority standards. And then lastly, we need to identify collaborative team members again by grade level and design that schedule that prioritizes small group instruction. So not only are they getting into our weekly meetings, but they are able to come into the classrooms to provide those small group instructional groups. So every great goal has to have a plan and these are our strategies that we believe will be the best in achieving this outcome of these three goals. And Chris is going to run it up. So as you can see, we are very passionate and involved in this work. And so to just highlight some of the main ideas or the things that we learned throughout this process, all of our goals and the strategies that go with them really showed us that it's our adult practices that we need to have a sharper focus on, fine-tune, learn from each other, learn from other experts to look at the work that we do for the end result of improvement and achievement. We do have an option of possibly using a CISA for support person 30 days throughout the school year that we hope will be considered. This would be someone who would do small group work, push into the classrooms, work with teams, help with one-on-one, someone that could really help us reach these goals. Another thing we learned that if we follow this plan, we will be in compliance with the expectations of the Every Student Sees Act, which is something we all want to be aligned with. We also believe that this needs to be an annual process, something that we review and revise each year. It was very intense this year, but as we get the hang of it, it should be a much more smooth process at the end of each year where we just look at the current student needs and revise and adjust what we might need for the next year. And to conclude, if implemented, these strategies will improve our universal instruction and subsequent learning for all students, all students needs, all students in the school, no matter who they are. So we thank you for your time and anything else?
Question? Does anybody have any questions?
I want to say that, Krista, this is great work your team is doing. You guys, I appreciate the work you have put into this. And fortunately, I know all too well what the school-wide plan entails. I wrote our first school-wide plan, which was a while ago, and I know it got more complex, but you really focused this very nicely. And I'm sure hopefully can make everything happen, you know, with this, who knows what's going to happen. And I'm sure Pat will appreciate all the work you've done on this because it certainly helps him too. So thank you, guys, and thank you, Marlene, for sticking with them even though you're on your way out. But who knows, maybe Marlene will be here subbing or doing something else down the road. So thank you, guys, very much for doing that.
Does anybody else have any questions? So I do. So number one, thank you. Obviously, a lot of thought has gone into all of this and I understand it hasn't been implemented yet. So what data do you plan on collecting in order to implement the process? Do you have a plan already?
It would be different data for each of the goals. Or the goal on collaboration or PLC, if you are hoping to use that. Or if you describe it as the pre- and post-survey, something that's just very informal to collect teachers' ideas and thoughts about collaborative work and teamwork and compare it to a similar type survey at the end of the year and see what else we need to continue to work on. We'll continue to use the universal screening data. That may look different depending on what the school year looks like. But that, again, will be very important to collect. How we as the adults use that is going to be the key piece. So the data stays the same, but how we understand that and use it to diagnose the more precise needs of the students is what will change. And also for our PLCs, we do have an agenda that we fill out and that we send in each week that we are doing it. So that will be another piece of data that we can look at and see how our PLC agenda has been changing with the notes that we take and based on the data.
And then I see with collaboration, you need planning time. So what's planning time look like with this process?
That'll fall into me.
He's going to create a magical schedule where everything falls into place.
And my thought is, you know, come up with one, if schools back were ready to go, what that would look like and then possibly some variations, you know, we have to, you know, individual recesses or just have a little more flexibility. But you have to build in time. You can't expect this to happen after school or any other time. It has to be built into the schedule to be effective.
Well, I know in the past, we've talked about, you know, planning time for our staff. And so I didn't know if we were looking to, you know, expand to have, you know, more, you know, an early pickup.
You know, depending on.
A day off, a month, or something like that. I mean, did you have those conversations of what's necessary in order to be successful?
Well, I think we would.
Well, obviously, I mean, if you take COVID out of it, in that normal, whatever that means, world, what does that look like?
We did talk about wanting it to be a weekly planning because as teachers plan, now you plan a week ahead and you adjust daily. So we want it to be weekly and that's already into the schedule. And we thought for title staff, a title person would be assigned per grade level rather than trying to cover K4. And maybe doing the same thing with special ed teachers and just trying to do some creative work in meeting that pool.
We kind of got to do a trial run in the spring because we had, you know, extra clean time because we had our Zoom meetings. And then we did do the one representative from the title team per grade level. And so that was a definite plus, having that one person so we can communicate back and forth. It really helped with that communication piece.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Marlene. And I think we need to congratulate Leanne as well. She's a new mom. So congratulations. I don't know if there's any other congratulations that I don't, I'm unaware of, but those are two that I'm aware of. So, well, thank you for coming in, thanks for your time. I know it's summer, so we really appreciate all the work that you're doing to assist our students to be successful because obviously there's a lot of work to do. So, thank you. And it's a more complicated time now too, so get creative. Yep, making outside the box and I don't even know what the box looks like.
Flexible.
Flexible is us. Right. So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you all.
I would like to have a motion. Um, I would like to have a motion to uh alter the agenda slightly and move the Darrell and Power easement request up to the next item. Can I have a motion to make that change? A second. All in favor vote by saying aye. Aye. I think that's only respectful of the two folks that are here to present. Um, so the Darrell and Power easement request, is there a motion to approve the Darrell and Power easement as recommended by the building and files committee?
Please.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All right. With that, I'm now going to have the two of you come. Do you have something you want to share? Mike, are you wanting to share?
Yeah, I can probably handle it. And they were few, not to put them on the spot or anything, but I mean, they, they were here um in case something, something came up and and you just wanted to be here to 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 answer any questions.
Do you want to introduce them?
Um, if they want. Steve Devaux from Darrell and's right away.
I'm a contract writer. Steve Shaw, the manager of real estate and right away with Darrell and Power.
Thank you both for coming.
You're welcome.
So to bring the full board up, um, the the billing grounds and and Robert, I'm I'm not trying to step on your toes here and you can jump in any point, but we were presented a request for right away all the same time COVID started. And um, basically, the response was, we can't meet with you right now and we will, we will talk to you later. And and Steve kept on us and and we were able to to meet here um more recently. And we did have some questions as to how the original easement that was presented um was was presented, not not so much in in what they were presenting, but just how it was presented. And a lot of it just stemmed from the the legal description of the the right of way and and how that went. Basically, what's what spurred this from my understanding is is Darrellin is um replacing the topmost wire. They're not changing the amount of power they're transmitting through the lines. They're not planning to change that. Um, they are, they're replacing the topmost line with a a different type of line that will also contain fiber optics for their internal communication. And in doing so, that does technically um probably change the original easement um purpose, which was for power transmission. So to to bring everything up, um, they have, they have presented another easement. And then with that, um, that got us looking at the easement and some of the conditions around that easement and the requirement that that some things get cleaned up. And that, um, and that, and so like I said, they've they've been with us. We've walked the property two or three times now. Um, that a few times to answer our questions and and have presented us with with an easement. Um, the compensation for these, it's actually set at $4,000. Um, again, we're not selling any property. We're just giving them the rights of of easements. And then due to the fact that that we are going to have some trees taken out, um, trees that are are hazard hazardous to the lines in the easement. Um, they have also presented us with a pre-construction damage claim agreement. Um, basically allowing us um enough funds to to replace trees um without limiting us to to a certain number, but the way that they they base it would be for another $4,000 on that. So we will be able to um make that, make that strip. And it's a strip right along um Education Avenue, Education Avenue, um, across from the west side of the elementary school. Robert, anything additional?
I think you've covered it pretty well. Um, they had an easement before, and this is to clarify, obviously, the the extra communication. So it's not a new easement. It's just a clarification to allow them to, obviously, to have it spelled out that we can use, that they can use the communications portion on that topmost wire. And they've been very, very good to work with and answering our questions. For those of you who don't know, Education Avenue is a city street. They have a 66-wide strip of land, uh, 33 feet on either side of the center line of Education Avenue, belongs to the city, Barokwa. And then there's 40 feet between that amount of that parcel that the city owns and our lot line to the west. And so we were able to uh grant the easement then for the 40 feet there. And then, of course, they'll need to get their other 40 feet from our adjacent landowners. Again, it's pretty straightforward, pretty normal situation. I think I have about 88 acres under Darrell and Power lines, so I didn't get 4,000, but. Hint, hint.
Uh, Darrell, Darrellon's been very, very good to work with. And and we walked it with Kim Cody and Terry and talked about so that we were very clear as to which um vegetation we would be taking out and which it would be. Um, you know, there's, there is a fence line. They've been in contact with our neighbors. Um, actually trying to help us get in contact with each other to to talk, you know, as you know, good fences make good neighbors. And our fence probably needs some repair. So um, or their fence probably needs some repair, or both of our fence, whoever's fence it is, probably needs some some repair and some and and taking care of, I guess. So all this is real good and and very happy with the way it turned out, especially when you know, it just kind of sat for three months while we were waiting for for all this to to settle down and we could meet again.
Well, we don't know exactly when this might take place. My understanding is perhaps August, perhaps August.
Yes, we're waiting for some environmental permitting, um, just trying to get all our trucks in a row before we we send the crews in, but uh Steve will be around if there's any uh crew impact, your activities here, he'll let you know and but we should be pretty much right around by the line. Maybe have to legalize the street a little bit.
Great. Um, and Matt, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think it's, I think it's my turn.
Okay. So with that, um, I'd like to thank both of the Steves for coming tonight because I know it's a long distance that you drove, and we really appreciate your willingness to be here if you needed any questions asked. Um, does anyone else have any question to ask? With that, um, motion to approve, as presented, or we already have that. All in favor vote by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And thank you, Mike, also for your work with us and Tom and Tom as well. Um, the next item of business, and you guys can stay as long as you like. You are, you are so welcome. We should have you here till 10 o'clock.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Um, do you have any public comment, Matt? All right, seeing none. We'll go to the consent agenda. Uh, motion to approve uh proof of public notice, approval of agenda minutes and voucher summary one. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second? Any discussion? With that, all in favor vote by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, voucher summary two, motion to approve voucher summary two, the amount of $246,026.62 as presented. Is there a motion? Is there uh, any discussion? With that, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstained? Aye. Motion carried. Um, donations over $250. Uh, motion to accept the donations, the amount of $5,009.14 from Liberty Steel and Wire rebate donation. $414 dollars to FFA and Performing Arts Booster Club. $5,500 towards the purchase of a grand piano with thanks for their generosity. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay. Mike, did you want to add anything?
Um, that's part of the Mr. Dew is working on a a new grand piano for the students' evenings and for our performers. And, you know, he's, he's done a great job of getting donations. Obviously, it's one of the larger donations from the Performing Arts Booster Club, uh, for $5,500. And then uh, the Liberty School and Wire for free day program.
Any discussion?
So why is a grand piano cost more than a grand?
With that, all in favor vote by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried with thanks for everyone's generosity. It sounds like wonderful addition to our, for our students and staff. Uh, resignations. We have none, boys, than a nice thing to say in July. Let's hope that continues. Uh, appointments, uh, motion to accept the appointment of Kristen Potter, title one teacher. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Okay.
All right. Would you, uh, I'm not sure if it's Tom or if it's Pat would like to get some more information about this title teacher?
We interviewed last Thursday afternoon. Quick to get this done, but um, you know, we had the title staff that was up here and uh, classroom teacher. So I got a lens on it, you know, the title teacher level, I have my lens, what I'm looking at. I call them teachers, third grade teachers. But Kristen taught, she taught for 11 years at a variety of of grade levels, which was a big plus, you know, from pre-K, K, first, second, fourth. And mostly by her choosing, she wanted to get this different level. And this was her compassion was in reading, her master's pieces, sitting on balanced literacy. She kind of checked without it being right in the question. She she checked out like everything we were looking for. Experience with PLCs, uh, she was part of their continuous improvement team. You know, it just was like, wow, the relationship. It was a, it was a really easy decision for the, for the should have, I think, perhaps. I've heard we don't hold that against.
Only a little bit.
Uh, he wants to get back to this area, I know she told her. We realized some things over COVID that aren't so bad. She wants to get back closer to her family. So, yeah. We were real good at that. In fact, all said that, like, unfortunately, why we hate the loser, but this is what she's made. I think it'll be a real good plus in the direction we're headed. There's the school too that just made that switch a few years ago from from targeted interventions to school-wide. It'll be a good, good help as well.
Um, do you know who the applicants we have in the position?
We had six, uh, one, one withdrew. We interviewed three.
Okay, wonderful.
I did have an opportunity to speak with her, and she is extremely excited. At least she has a four-year-old, is what she said. So I'm getting home as, you know, that's what she, she, she definitely. Be with X, Y, and Z, so.
Well, thank you for that. Any other discussion? With that, all in favor vote by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, 2020, 2021 academic standards. I moved to approve the proposed notice of student academic standards for 2020, 21 as presented to the board pursuant to section 120.1213B and 11831GA of the state statutes. And I moved to direct the administration to incorporate the board adopted student academic standards that are that are V and F and F for the 2020, 21 school year into a notice for parents and guardians that the administration will provide in a manner that is consistent with the requirements of section 120.1213 of the state statutes. I make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
You gonna repeat that?
I could, but I didn't do it very well the first time, and I don't know if I can do it better next. Kathy, did you, anybody pass? Anybody?
I can say a little bit.
Okay, no. You are invited.
From here or I go off again?
I'm gonna have you a little closer just because it's a little more difficult to hear. If you don't mind.
Okay, so, um, DPI is picking up with three new sets of standards again this year. Uh, Noah's art in FIA, personal financial literacy, and some updated English language art standards. So, um, I reached out to CISA right away um to see what they have planned. The ELA um person is the one who who is going to be my resource for for the whole process. Um, she shared with me the the three-year rollout process that she recommends using for any set of standards. So we are planning to follow the first year, this would be this year, is the, just the understanding year. Um, looking at what these new standards are, whether they're dramatically different or just little tweaks from what the previous standards were. And as CISA, it's actually three separate contact people, but each of them said they're planning some some session with FIA, financial literacy and the revised ELA standards. So the folks that represent those teams at our school, I will try to encourage to join me at those so that we can just understand what these new standards look like. The next year, year two, is more of the looking at our current curriculum and see how it matches up and see what we want, what we want to see. And then the third year is the year where you roll it out, you add assessment and you try it out. It's the the implementation year. So with these new standards, our handy um curriculum calendar may need a little adjusting, and I know John mentioned that already. And Tom and I have talked about the fact that we may need to do a few moves on there just to make sure that these new DPI standards and the three-year rollout plan match what we have here so that we're not expected to have something ready before we've had a, had the chance to really maybe understand the new standard. That's what I know.
I know.
It almost, it almost seemed a little tone deaf when I got that email a little bit, like, really?
No.
But, but I will give Krista a huge shout out here. So she not only is starting this new position, and you saw the role she took with that title team, but also um, it was, hi, Krista, I'm Tom. Um, here are some new standards. Let's go. How should we handle this? And uh, uh, she's really just kind of grabbed a hold of it and 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 taken us over and uh I'm very, very grateful for that, especially while the admin team is is definitely um it it's just comforting knowing we've got somebody that is absolutely going, you know, doing these these other things so that we can, we can focus more on getting the, getting the schools, schools open.
So that calendar, um, I think it probably already did some tweaking anyway. So when might we see what that calendar might look like? And I, and I don't believe you approve that revised calendar.
I don't believe you have to approve any, any of that. Um, what I would say is, we can come with, when we have, you know, we can definitely come with a update, um, you know, technically after that, however. Um, they did have, they have released, at least from what I looked into, Krista, if you correct me if I'm wrong, they have released what that will look like through 2024, I believe. So they, so that we're not surprised next year, you know, I think they've now released that extended, okay, what subjects are they looking at the next few years that we're not coming back in a year and going, oh, wait, um, they're doing science, you know, or again, are doing, doing math now. So now we can kind of correlate it, really match up really nicely.
I think in the past, we did approve of the non-. But just because we wanted to keep on track and we were necessarily keeping um, on track. So can you just let us know when we're ready to roll out what that calendar might look like?
It's in the works. It's in the works.
That's good to know. Thank you for staying here and presenting that.
Thank you.
With that, any more questions? All in favor vote by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. So, um, I do, I know Robert's on mute. He gets kind of difficult to hear. Can you, Beth, can you hear? Are they telling you they're, they're voting, just so I know? Are they doing? Are they doing it?
But the other two I can tell.
You can tell? Okay.
But he usually unmutes when we make decisions.
Okay, I just haven't quite heard that voice, and I can't see always, so it's time to make sure everybody is voting. Um, the next item is the 2020, 21 parent and student handbooks. Is there a motion to approve the 2021, 2021 elementary school VAMS and high school, middle school, high school, parent and student handbooks with the information that was presented?
Oh.
Is there a second? So I state that because the information that's in the handbooks is spot on. But there may be some tweaking to how it's being presented, like if you're a parent and you see it differently later on, it may look a little different later on, but the information is the same. All right?
One of the questions, one question I have is if you have middle school, high school, taking out like staff and all that, but it wasn't in the elementary.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, that's it. Yep, so what we had done, Jason had approached me about, you know, just, it's 70 pages long. Parents reading a 70-page document, probably not going to.
You're welcome, parents.
Yeah, so everyone, yeah, Jason, a big thanks for that. So what we had talked about was just making the policies and everything like that a reference point. You can go and find this policy by clicking on the link and it's active, or, you know, if you didn't really want to go and get a hard copy, you could, but and so what that did was that made middle school, high school, you know, much, much shorter, and now we'll be, we'll be catching up with that as well. I do want to make a note that, you know, we, you know, and make that known for everybody, that we will have a COVID addendum that will be added on to this that will not necessarily override, but almost supersede the policies that are in there that would be overlapping. So an example, and we don't have anything specific in that, that parent student handbook, but if, you know, if we had something on Halloween last, or something like that, like, you know, we may be having very different policies and procedures this year with facial covering than we do otherwise. More, you know, and so that's just one example.
And what I had requested is we had worked for quite a few years to get those two handbooks to be as similar as possible, and then there were, there were some changes, and that just started, and obviously that is not the priority with everything else going on in summer school starting. So it won't look like it was presented, but the information will be. And the other thing was, for example, high school, it had, it had the name of the policy and go to the website, and I said, why not just list them all and just they go to the website versus. And we want our families to use the website more than they have in the past, too. So the reality is most parents probably don't read all of that, but hopefully, I mean, they shouldn't, I know I did, but those people don't.
And some of the things parents are already using the website for, so why? And if you're, if you're like, you're not looking for that 70-page handbook sitting around somewhere.
Or you're Googling it. You know, there's different formats today than what they're.
I assume that we probably have a much better handle, which families don't have the technology access. So I guess I hope we make sure that they're aware, they can have a printed copy, because I'm guessing we know almost exactly who doesn't have the technology access they need and the way they need it or whatever. Because there still are a few of those out there.
And I, I don't know if that was in there, again, that's a good point, so is there, is there something that we sent out that says if you want a paper copy, is that included?
I think it's like the registration forms.
Okay.
Things that say, yes, I prefer, whichever way, I'd prefer electronic, if it's fine, or I prefer.
Or, or maybe there would be one that would say all of the information in paper? I mean, I don't know, but that's something to, to think of, so that you have that available, John?
In the past, we've invited parents into use technology. Then they go to the public library. In COVID, right now it's.
No, but the library is open right now for computers if you sign up.
They're phase three now, which.
Right. You don't have to sign up now.
But some people might have a health problem. That's, they still might not, might need a paper copy.
Absolutely.
Which is something else. Any, any other discussion? With that, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for that work. I know. That's everything else going on. 2019, 20 budget adjustments. Motion to approve then, 2019, 20 budget adjustments as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. Is there a motion? Is there? Arena, all right. With that, Mike, you want to give us some more information or pretty clear? Do you want to share anything?
These will be the final budget amendments, the 1920 school year, which ended three weeks ago. So obviously, it should be the final ones, but they're, what we call the cleanup, the to take a look at, you know, how things actually finish up the year, more so this year than most every other year. Just because a lot of our expenses became unpredictable by the end of the year, and we did our best to try to adjust and apply and make decisions that financially program with, with our program in the most sense, and these budget adjustments reflect that.
Any discussion? Going one, going twice. With that, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Mike, thank you for all of that. I, I know that it's been amazingly complicated with COVID and all of the changes, and thank you for, I'm sure, the hundreds of hours that you have spent trying to update this information. It's very much appreciated. Item number nine, information, 2019, 20 seclusion and restraint report. Kathy, you're up.
I am. So the seclusion and restraint report is headed to your, your board packet. Jana completed it. I am just, you know, presenting it. It was a, basically, we have to report how many students we have had to put in holds or to calm down in a calm down room, that kind of thing in a seclusion setting. This year looked to be a very good year. There was only one student. It was the same student. And there were only four incidents. So four, or two incidents of restraint and four of seclusion to calm down, so a calming technique. Which is, which is a very good year in a, in a special ed setting. So that little guy is still learning how to, how to figure it out, and they're working really hard. To combat those things, we continue to teach our staff de-escalation techniques. CPI, there are 48 students, there were 48 staff on staff that have that training, pre-administrators. That was last year's administrators. I'm assuming that all three building principals, and I also have that, so that would be four that are available for this next year. And we'll continue that. We have a CPI certified trainer on staff, one of our special ed teachers is a certified trainer, so we'll continue certifying the staff, too. We went through those de-escalation techniques and do these things safely and, and effectively. So that is basically it in a nutshell. It looks like it was, they were moving in the right direction based on my analysis of this information. So it was good.
Questions for Kathy? The one question I had, I mean, it's the year of COVID, so we weren't here all year. Did that student, I hope, receive some additional assistance at home with the family, with them not being as supportive to better serve that individual?
I cannot answer that question.
I'm sorry.
I was not here. I know that he was in a program that would have been reaching out to him.
Okay.
Um, so I'm hoping that that is the case.
I would assume.
And I would assume that, but again, not, not being specifically, I'm not specifically having my eyes on that child or there's, there'll be. I can't, I can't quite answer that, but yes, I assume. I would hope so as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. The next item is the 2020, 21 preliminary budget.
Again, for information, as I've shared with the Budget and Finance Committee, realistically, nothing has changed at the state level to cause us to really present for you a, a change or approval. We may have that by next month, or at least by next month, I'll have some other of our expenditures a little bit tighter as far as what we're looking at. Obviously, we need to have something approved, and we do, we have a budget approved. I'd like to feel a little bit more accurate to where we're at, what was previously approved earlier in spring. Out of Madison, we're lacking very much, that we do know July 15 was the tax due date and payments were due July 15, and we should have an analysis. Yeah, it's not meaningful. So we lost certain.
Mike, if you wanted to be done talking, you could.
This is the typical, you know, budget adjustment form that the state, you know, provides us the format for, and it's, it's what I would call the cleanup of the budget. Our numbers are coming in pretty strong now. I mean, there's not a lot of things hanging out there, I know. One thing that has changed even since last month. Gotta shut the YouTube on. Yep. We went through practice today, that's it, I remember that, now about, okay. So the, I don't want to listen to myself. The, the, one of the biggest things that came across was I was able to finalize the self-insurance entries for the 19, 20 school year or physical year. And as we've talked before, we always think the, the costs incurred from September to June, we estimate out the next two months based on an average daily amount. And obviously, that can be skewed if you're, if you've got some high-cost claims. And what happened last year, even though we knew we had some high-cost events going on, what we, or, I mean, what we had set up last year, even outside of the stop-loss insurance reimbursement exceeded what we booked for an accrual. So we already, if you want to say, started the year in the hole on the, on the self-funded insurance. We also gave the premium holiday for the year, so that even with that, we still came out with, with what I would consider more a small, you know, it was a $200,000 deficit or so, and we'll, we'll adjust that, that number after the audit. But it's not, it was not on the plan. But it did, that's one thing that, that has changed. The other then, because after seeing that, some of the costs are pulling in, window project, and what you, they're going to be, and some other projects that didn't get done and everything, as in previous years, the, I don't want to say the balance budget, but in order to approve the budget last, last year, last fall, we had an estimate for the public obligations that we incurred for the, for the tertiary health insurance payments. And we have been setting money aside in the Fund 73, the OPEP trust, to, to pay those in the future. And when we completed the budget last year, we didn't plan for any additional contribution in there. I think for one more year now, another $100,000, you know, it's, it's not a major, but $100,000 will, will maintain our, our, our payable costs and provide us some flexibility that we'll talk about in, in future compensation committee meetings, and then eventually with the board for the future of using those funds, either to pay our current obligations or to hopefully take a look at, at what we're currently offering our staff and modifying that a little bit to, to accomplish some, some goals that we had as far as the staff. That, that amount will be about 1.5 or so in there after this contribution. Very similar to what we had done last year. I think last year was more, I think we had 150 in Fund 73, 150 in Fund 46, which is capital projects fund. At the point we're at right now, the capital projects funds, it's not necessary to do that. We can actually start relying on it, I think, basically, I don't know, two weeks. And so, so that, that, while it will be a tool for us in the future, is not necessary this year. As you can tell, we are still projecting a deficit in the general fund for this year, as we had planned to do some fund back. Other than that, if you look at the pages two and three, and it breaks down, you know, a majority of the changes are for the OPEP contribution. Now, I went through the departmental budgets, and they were all across the board. Some, obviously, really underspent what they budgeted because we weren't in school for a third year. I think, you know, it, it changed a lot. Then we had some other areas where we really had to pick it up because we did have to buy some more program, let's say, for the library and, and, and bring that along the same lines, that adjusted district budgets. It's, it's pretty much all COVID-related items that, you know, will be picked up and, and adjusted out. We had accomplished a lot of those budget adjustments last time. Actually, when you, when you're drilling them, they just seem like, oh my God, these are huge swings. Then you get all the way down, and it's like 167,000. I mean, it, it really doesn't, kind of has a way to balancing it. On the special ed fund, you know, I think it's, you know, we, not 100% sure why I didn't have this state categorically, and I had to double-check it like three times to figure out what part of that I had missed. Why, why I missed it by that much, and the only thing I can figure is that when we approved the budget last October, I just didn't update based on the previous years. I, I left the budget in based on what we had received last year and not on what our actual ADAS set to be. I don't think they came in stronger than, than what we had originally planned, and why I didn't pick it up last, I have to get the budget amendments, I'm not sure. And then we have the high-cost special education aid, that we did just get noticed that, that we could qualify, you know, it's a decline form we have to do based on the previous year's expense, and it actually came in just around that $30,000. Our alternative placement costs went down partially because the students graduated out. And then we also were able to fund those with the IDA funding post, leaving them in there. They do also get to, get to claim the OPEP contribution in special ed as a payable cost, so that's good. And so, yeah, it's pretty much your typical, what we've done in the past, budget amendments. We're still going to end the year with a very strong fund balance. I hope that in the next conversation. But that's, that's. Any questions?
I mean, the only thing I thought was it's pretty darn close. It was all the unexpected things last year. I, I didn't, I thought there were going to be.
It's, there's, there's lots of room for improvement on budget management. That for, for many different reasons, you know, I don't want to say sometimes luck, but I mean, it's your gut, it's your, you, you know where things are at, but there was a couple of things where I said, you know, that could have really went the other way in Korea, you know what I mean? So this time is always the time to look back and. If the, you know, I mean, so um, this time is always the time to look back and say, you know, we need to do a better job of, like, for instance, on the the special ed um uh category, like, that's a number that I can calculate as soon as we ever able to cost from the three.
She doesn't take compliments.
I know that.
Yeah, okay.
He turned it, he turned, he turned it into a negative.
Um, so, yeah, in in the 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 self-insurance, like I said, it we still have very strong. Um, through the process, we were able to identify, because you guys know or don't remember, we switched um third-party administrators last September. Yeah, we we switched and during that process that coincided with our stop-loss insurance in a in our planned year of September 1st, we had significant claims in in July and August that were, we did get um stop-loss reimbursement through the reconciliation process at the end of the year. I got to looking at the numbers and I'm like, I have enough here. And we went through it and I had Chris from Cockles look at it with two, and I said, this is what what we identified was the old third-party administrators had reported and and we had claimed proper expenses. Um, but through the process of the transition, we continued to claim file with our stop-loss insurance. I really felt we were gonna have an issue. You know, the stop-loss carrier that we're still with stayed with us and they're gonna honor that. That was about a $25,000 recovery that that we um probably would have lost out on if we weren't able to to reconcile. So um, it's, we we had a good year. Um, until late June, we did not have any one member exceed $70,000. Uh, we do now have a couple um that just have have went over. So we had, we had a really good year. And and the claims that we did have were more unique in nature, not ongoing, so I don't really. That more will come on that as those numbers get finalized, but I'm pretty sure they better be locked because for me, it's something.
The next item is 2020-21 preliminary budget.
Yes. Um, it just, like, this afternoon, when we were meeting on reopening plans, and I got to share with Tom that Mr. Oldenburg, Warren Oldenburg, he called me back today. Um, actually, rather quickly, I left him a message sometime this morning and told him what I need to talk to him about, called back, and I have his cell phone number now. Um, you know, I I told him, I said, usually in years, and I've only been doing this like nine years, but I mean, usually as we've had these, you know, we start hearing things out of Madison as far as, you know, we are in the second year of the budget set. They would have to do something to change what is in law. And I said, early in the COVID crisis, we heard decreasing revenues statewide and that um whether it be the technical college, CW system, you know, state employees, 5%, what should we plan for? So, you know, the the DPI and and the people at Baird and and across the board, SAA, I think, all recommend that you adjust your revenue limit calculation down, you adjust some of your estimates down. Um, to, but really, out of Madison, we haven't heard anything. And I said, can you just tell me, are you, what are you here? And basically, um, what he shared with me, and I and I think it sounds very logical and right. Um, as you know, the income tax deadline was July 15. Um, they won't know how their revenues from last calendar year until everybody makes their tax payments in July 15. They also are still realizing the sales tax decreases due to to that. And but they're not sure because we had had such a strong first two, you know, two-thirds of the year were so strong that the state was actually, you know, calculating a surplus and they were trying to figure out how they were going on that surplus. And we do have our A-Test one. He said that if the budget projections after these projections are factored in, vary by an X percent, and he couldn't remember if it was a half a percent, a percent, or whatever, the governor's office will be required to do a budget repairment. Otherwise, only the governor can initiate a budget repairment. And so he said, right now, the legislature really has nothing to work that with because they're, they can't bring it whole in any. So that's why we haven't heard anything. So the July 1st A-Test in the state of Wisconsin was based on current law, which is actually more favorable than what um we we had already projected, we had projected some decrease. Same with the revenue limit calculation is built on a $300 increase in the per pupil revenue. Now, all that means that it really doesn't even change the Broquary School District if the formula stays the same. Because now we started, as we will talk, we've started playing with numbers as far as enrollment. What happens if a number of our students decide to home? What happens if they open enroll to another district? And what I'm seeing on our on our um on the Baird model and on my budget projections is it really doesn't change too much because we're gonna be in a whole, a whole harmless in a declining bone exemption. Um, it doesn't change much for the 2021s. You look up two to three years, it changes a lot because that three-year averaging starts, you realize it, you live with it. But let's just say we were at 1,100 last year, but we dropped to 900, and then we jumped back up to 1,100. Yes, you're gonna feel that drop to 900 for the next two years, you know, it's a three-year average. But realistically, with our fund balance and where we're at and what, we have a lot of things work in our favor. Um, our debt service levies wrapping up, we that we increased our levy for the the referendum. Funds 200,000 plus, we are overspending our budget, or, you know, we're using fund balance. So we will be at a higher level. It's not a huge dollar off, but it does, it does help help hold that um, they'll break down a little bit. And so when when you all factor it through, I really don't have much to change on the 2021 budget at this time. If anything, I would show a little bit more money because the whole harmless is coming to a level if we uh, if 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 we go, if if we decrease in our in our um if we decrease the number of students and we increase that per pupil amount where I've got a $0 increase and a $300, which I don't think we should do at this time. I mean, I I think we should, you know, go forward. The other, the other areas, the CARE, CARE Act funding, the ESSER, is that what we're calling it? ESSER?
It's changed, the name's changed.
Um, ESSER is more stabilization funds that were financed through the CARE Act, but then the state is allocating it.
The state is allocating it. Um, it was, this is what's up for debate right now on the national level is that they were going to allocate based on title uh formula, and now it's in litigation. They're going, they're they're duking it out right now on which um, which route they're going to go. Um, which obviously has a has a great impact on public versus private education in every town, including, oh, in every city, so.
So where we're at with that is our our allocation was 260 something. It was a big number. I mean, for a district our size, very strong number. Um, as Tom was saying, there's litigation. DPI had it based on um low income, number of low-income students, an allocation based on that. The US Armageddon through that state of Austin direction has said no, it's gonna be based on the total enrollment at the private schools, which would obviously then, I mean, they're gonna have more total than than not. In our district, it's not that big a number, it's it's but either way, so what they're heading us to is not allocate that money to them. DPI is recommending that we reserve that portion of the budget. That we may not, we may be sending that when it all gets shook out and and finalized. But at at least we know what to budget up. There is a long list of things that this money can be used for all we have. I mean, there's, there's no doubt about it. Um, I get nervous when whether it be staff members or or people in the community, or however you look at it, say, there's this much, you know, whether it be for for this charter school or the high school or the elementary school available. Um, if there is a formula to it, but I mean, we've got to take this as a district perspective on this, and how can we best use it? Maybe it isn't technology upgrades. Maybe it is in hiring four extra staff members to help us um pick up some gaps that that, you know, so that is administrative team we are working through and we worked through with the DLT. Um, all the extra costs with the sanit, you know, the um disinfecting and all of that. That's that's a big cost that's really starting to add up, um both in in PPE and in materials and equipment and um, you know, things that we just didn't have. So, you know, that that by the time we get to October will be included in the budget. And I was talking with some other business managers today. I said, how are you guys handling this? Are you including it in your budget yet? And they said, and you can go back to March in claim costs. So through the audit process, I need to go back and I need to look and say, all right, however, because we have these savings here, if we, you know, I mean, some districts are going to go back to, and there's a couple of things I've identified that, you know, I'm saying, you know, I think that's a very appropriate use of that funds. That was totally unproceeding. It's what they were for, and we quoted them too. But, you know, we could get pretty aggressive if we really wanted to help last year's budget, and I just don't think that was the intent of the funds. The intent of the funds is to make education better going in my, in my field.
So the ionization, for example, could that be utilized because of what their recommendation is for um cleaning of the air?
Without um giving you a definitive answer, definitely, it's in my mind is as a possibility to to consider that. And I think it would be a good use throughout both buildings. Um, because there's significantly significantly more in this building as we anticipated than it is at the elementary, like um, three times.
Three times as much, so we're then talking about a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh. Um, and we'll have more conversations about that in the near future. We're actually getting, yep, yeah, I'm um gonna get another call on basically the same thing. So, not basically, the same thing, just a different supplier, so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll have better feeling for.
An increased custodial staff and things like that?
Um, we have not went there yet. Um, quite honestly, the last time we hired, it wasn't um but maybe things would be a little differently now as as far as that goes. Um, we're still working through to try to figure out what that would look like. Um, we do plan on through some moving heavens, more coverage during the day. Definitely, we have to, to to do the protocols that we need to, we have to have more coverage during the day. Because the claiming at night is going to be um so important, including owl watching, the, you know, I mean, there's there's all kinds of things that we we need, you know. Um, we actually met with custodial staff Thursday to kind of give them the overview. Um, we started some protocols this morning with the summer school. And um, right now, one of our bigger problems is PPE and getting candy gloves. Candy gloves.
How about working with the hospital?
Um, we're, we're working with the hospital. Um, we had sent some gloves to them, and if they could even give us that back, that would be good. I'm not sure where they feel they're at.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just asking.
I don't know either. And um.
You know, not too long, I mean, within this recent, they weren't, didn't have access.
No.
No.
Any kind of rules like this where all sudden a supplier will have gloves and somebody snuffs them all up. I mean, they just buy, you know, a million dollars worth or whatever it is, and and you're just left on. Um, you know, we're supposed to have a hand sanitizer in every classroom. So we've ordered 250, you know, um, you know, dispensers and they're trickling in. And, you know, it's, it's not one vendor because we pushed and and um, there's probably some we could, we could really overpay for, and we might end up being at that point. Problem is with this, the dispensers, you gotta get the bottles fit in them, and so then that becomes a whole a whole problem there too. So, um, yeah, there's, there's plenty of of PPE and and for that, at those ESSER.
I'm meeting with Terry on Thursday. Um, we'll have that conversation as far as staffing and where he feels everything is on his end. Um, we'll go from there.
And then we, we believe, though, that we will be given additional funds. That's what you're telling me?
Yes.
To cover those additional expenses.
I did not gather from Mr. Oldenburg that they were going to look to balance the lack of revenues reusing those.
Okay.
However, I told, I speculated to him, however, do I think they're going to say, well, you can backfill some of that with these funds? That's why I think it's really important to use of the water.
Yes.
Right. I mean, I, I think if you're gonna balance your budget with it, you're gonna be in trouble.
And there are districts that that's, you know, that's the thought right now is that they can make it look, you know, better. However, again, um, you're you're running into, running into all sorts of things then.
Yeah.
It'll be, it'll be interesting to see how every school uses those, but I do appreciate Mike's uh perspective and how he's kind of filtering through some things. It's been um a-again, when everybody knows there's money available, everybody wants a little bit, um, or wants their cut of the of that money. And then, um, you know, a-again, the one thing I would say is that um, it's going to be very public and, you know, so there are you know, lawmakers that are gonna know exactly what ROPA gets in, you know, in ESSER funds. So we just need to be.
And they should.
Absolutely. But, you know, that's the the difference between Wisconsin and some other states, which were much more like uh, it wasn't as cut and dry with the formula.
Well, federally, I I know, what I've been reading, which I know there's not one decision that's been made, but it sounds like there is one to be some type of a funding coming out. I I have no idea what it looks like, how much it is for schools, but I know it's a big part of the conversation.
Yeah, I saw anywhere from um sixty uh to 200 billion with the proposal um uh that that is going through the Senate right now. I don't know exactly where that's gonna land. On the one side, it says 60 to 80, one side says 200. Who knows how that trickles down to us, right?
Exactly.
Um, we have no clue.
Um, correct. And it's, it is going to cost us more money to do this to schools or to teach virtually or to do a combination of the two. There's, compared to a year ago, the year is going to look very differently.
I'm glad that you're talking about hiring some additional staff, those four folks that you were talking about, whatever that looks like, because um, I can't imagine that we don't need additional staff. We needed additional staff before.
And here's where the frustrating part is, we may have additional staff already on staff because we don't know what students are coming.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, we.
Right, right.
They may not need to hire just three.
Reality, you know, I mean.
It's potentially.
Maybe, but then maybe two days later, we get 50 other kids coming here because they see that it's a good thing. I mean, there's just so many unknowns that it's.
So I guess the next step is where we're at for the budget um would be to continue with the billing round meeting, I would assume, in the near future.
Yeah.
And then also with the compensation committee, so we can actually lock in um a salary plan um for next, for next um school year. And we want to be able to prove it by the August meeting. Usually when we do, um, I think, I think that would be an appropriate thing. Um, except this budget does have an increase built into it, not not excessive, not um, I don't. Um, except this budget does have an increase built into it, not, not excessive, not, um, out of, out of the question or anything. But there's some other things to compensation wise that we're gonna want to, um, take a look at and, and see how we're, we're gonna be able to handle.
Um, are, how about mental, mental health? Um, is there any additional funding in this budget to try to address mental health issues?
Again, that I believe is included in the SIR allowable costs. Um, and we, we definitely look at that. Um. As Tom identified when we, when we met with the DLT, you know, that's first and foremost, if our staff is not ready, you know, we, we, we need them mentally to be here. So we, we've identified that problem with mental health of the many problems is what does that help with? You know, what, what is it, what, what can we do? What, what can we invest in, what, you know, um, we have some things, we have the employee assistance program through Gunderson. Um, that we're already aimed in that it's not highly utilized as most employee assistance programs are.
It's very difficult to get in, I can tell you that.
So, um. They, you know, so, I, I mean, there's all, there's all of those types of, of things. But then maybe there is, you know, we don't have a lot of PD, we don't have a lot of PD opportunities. We, we've got a lot of stuff we need to take care, you know, sort of schedule something like that, that, that's gonna be a, a stressor and a, and a, you know. As we get this administrative team going and they get to know their staff, those are gonna come. I mean, we really do.
There's some online options, Mike, and I don't know what that looks like around here, but there, um, this was before this year, but there's some real strong supportive online twenty-four hour options. I don't know if Gunderson had that in our insurance, I don't know if there's a supplement or some type for that. Um, but I've read some pretty amazing things about it because it's in your home, you don't have to go somewhere. And this is before COVID, so.
Um, actually I heard an ad for it on one of my. Um, no, but I mean, it is, it is, it's, you know, nationwide and in every state and, um, you have your life.
Right.
That is, you know, that it's your home, so it's not, you're just.
Right, so I, I don't know if that's.
You know, part of our program.
Um, and I don't know if this fits in with looking at this or if this is, should fall under a different topic or a different discussion. But has there been talk about? School supplies?
Yes. So, Brenda's been on me before Pat was here, um, about school supplies. Um. Basically, I told him, listen, I wanted to have the district buy the school supplies, um, for one thing. Problem is, is the. The same thing every parent has, I mean, our, our school supply lists are long and, and varied and by whatever class you're in, you know, I mean. So Brenda and Pat are going through and identifying, okay, which ones are basic school supplies? And yes, the district should, and which ones are, you know what, maybe this is even easier, we don't do these. And then, okay, which ones are we gonna ask the parents to purchase? And we're really working hard to basically knock those off.
I just, you know, for a few reasons, like, I don't wanna take my kids to Target for two hours to feed their school supplies.
Yep.
Um.
I don't know what the online capabilities are right now.
Right.
I, I don't know.
I, I haven't looked either, but to, you know, I mean, just coordinate, like, you're shopping for both the kids, it's a process. Like you are there trying to find all this stuff. And so, you know, just that and at a drop of a dime, it'd be like, we're not coming back Monday. I mean, all of our school supplies stayed here while we were schooling at home in the spring. And then we got them at the end of the school year, like, okay, here's all your stuff. And, you know, a quarter of it wasn't gone through even. And so then, you know, you just, I think parents are gonna wanna have stuff at home in case they need to go to home. Uh, and so I didn't know if there was a way to put that in with something.
And I don't even know if that would, like I said, this has been something that. I, you know, I think, I think, I'm just gonna say GT and if it wasn't GT, maybe it was our G. I, I don't remember what school district it was, but I, in my mind, it was GT and went to, I've heard Kickapoo went to it this year, was able to buy some donations to help them fund.
Elementary.
Elementary school supplies, that's the thing. And, and I think we could, I'm sure we would have, uh, local donors that would help us offset any costs, you know, I mean, or that. I know a lot of parents would buy dual sets. To cover the, you know, I mean, so I mean, I know people have been very generous, but it is, it adds up, it's, it's big. Um, we had to change the lists in how we handled them, the communal things had to, you know, I mean.
Right.
You know, I mean, we had to think about it, is that marker bucketing going to be? Everybody gets a marker, you know, I mean, it will get them out, or is that gonna keep their name on it and have it for the rest of the year? So I unfortunately don't know what Pat's run out of, we just talked about it again last Friday.
I just, I was hoping that if we had to do something, I mean.
Yep.
I'd rather pay fifteen dollars and say, okay, here's your SRAM wrap package of school supplies and.
And we can buy a lot of the supplies very reasonably. I mean, honestly, we can, I mean, Crayola crayons and stuff like that, when you buy them in a mold, you can read the prices. I don't know, it's never really much better than the fifty cents that they run at this tiny year of costs and stuff, but.
The school can, you know, those for, you know, because we're buying them like, okay, you buy it, you correct. Now this grade's buying crayons for the art room and this grade's buying markers for the art room and, you know, different things.
And what we felt is we don't have to buy them all on September.
Right.
Exactly like you said, maybe we're not gonna use them the same as we did last year, so why have boxes that go on the couch?
There's also this stuff that passed program, um, and.
Which they've been not, they, they reached out to us, um, they, I don't know where they're at either. I mean, everything's changed.
There's a bunch of supplies, I'm telling you, uh, because Robert's wife has actually been collecting them for a long time. So I know that they exist.
Yeah.
Um, I know the foundation has been asked to donate, she can stop, and if, if I would rather as a foundation donate to our schools, our school, um, specifically versus a program like that, if we need those dollars.
Sure.
So I, I know this is a little off track, but.
No.
So is that built into the budget that we're gonna be purchasing them?
They're, they're. Not completely, but I did in, tell them that, um. Based on where we are, I gave them a dollar amount, I said, is this, I said, I have no basis for where we're at as far as school. I said, you know, just like, I said, are we talking five thousand, are we talking ten thousand?
Right.
And I said, we can do something. I mean, if we could get that throughout the entire district, um, we, we just have to cut some. I mean, that's, and, and that's doable.
Is it getting too late to make decisions like that?
It's not too early.
I, I, I know that parents, parents need to know as well as ordering is gonna take time.
Um, but as we found with the survey, parents don't hope they're sending their kids. So I mean, they're not out buying, they're not out, I mean, some are, some are really wanting to buy those school.
Well, because I think they think, okay, if toilet paper flew off the shelf this fast, so are purple notebooks.
Right.
And I don't wanna go across to try to find it, so I'm gonna buy it, because I think last year they had it. So I just think communication out very soon to say.
I will share that again, and Brenda has, Brenda's been on me.
I'm not on his committee, but it was just a post on Facebook today, on somebody asking about, we don't wanna have the list. Brenda actually answered it, it was to one of those Vernon County or ROPA groups or whatever, and said, um, I hope to have the answer for you in the next couple of days, um, we are working on it. So she did just put that out there today on one of those sites, so.
And, and like I said, she, she could foresee this coming, she's done this long enough and she knew parents like to be able to hit the sales.
Right, I think we can gather enough money if we need it to from other places for good supplies.
I just don't know what that is. I mean, when, when, when you look at the list, it's, it becomes like, I don't wanna say overwhelming, but it's like, well, my, I didn't realize we did three sets of watercolors and we did, you know what I mean? It's just like.
But I can tell you, you know, so much comes back home.
Well, that's kind of the parent in me that says, let's take a look at the list.
Not just last year, but every year, I mean, a lot. I, I think that, I actually just cleaned up the stuff that they brought home at that school over the last couple of weeks. I was like, get those toilets, we're cleaning them out. And, I mean, I, they all have notebooks, like they use five pages out of two notebooks. And so I just think really good look at this, what is really needed? And can't we buy it again in December if we see that we're low?
Yes, that's, that's kind of my feeling is, and, and we do buy things in the school store. I mean, there's a lot of things not on that list that we do for teacher supplies and everything like that. I just think we would have to spend it now. Where it probably all started was teacher A would use a lot of supplies and teacher B would use the rest of it. I mean, I think if we look at it, um, but they did it by grade level. I gotta believe there was communication, do we really need to buy these, what do you use those for, those types of things? I think if Pat can look at it and, and with his experience, say, you know, maybe we just gotta not do this and then do it another way type of thing. I think we're gonna get there. And that's kind of what, I mean, Brenda had asked me back in May, June, that's a Brenda, I just, the rest of the administrative team can't make that decision, we don't have, we don't have.
Does this budget include additional title funding because of the concern of our students requiring it?
I, I haven't really, um, adjusted the title budget, those allocations are all, um, very strong. Title budget will increase, however, as we're gonna hear tonight, our title programming is gonna change. So, um, yes, yes, it will, it will. That's what you, you build your budget based on what the.
Are you having sleepless nights?
Um, that's sleepless.
Yeah.
No, there's just. Yeah, it's just, it's busy. Tom and I were talking, it's just really busy and, and if you could focus in one direction, it just does not allow. It's just, and you just can't do it.
Too many pieces.
Too many, I know.
Well, and, and like I, you know, I was explaining, you know, I, I told my wife to get ready for the budget meeting and everything, I said, it's not that. Well, we had to meet on this and this and that. There was not one of those things that should have been put on, not one, because that would have caused me more, more stress if we would have put that off. Would have then cut me from, you know, I mean, that's why keeping yourself up to date and, and, and on fast is what you have to do.
The buses?
Are in.
They're in?
In and paid for.
In and paid for.
Cameras are installed. Um, that's working through the software now that we got them their final payment. Um, that'll come on Wednesday, they're gonna, they're gonna go, so, um. People to drive them, maybe, I, I mean, they gave all, they did good things, um, that we were planning and. Yeah, there's just a lot of fun going on.
So the bus drivers that we've had have, are committed to driving.
One, they've been very committed throughout the summer.
Yes.
And, and I've asked Randy if he's heard any concerns, any, you know, I'm not gonna be able to do this conversation. And he has not, and he thinks he would have. Um, but. You know, as far as a demographic that it ever is. We have, we have a number of bus drivers that are in demographics that are at risk and I would not fault any one of them. If they made that decision on their own, you know.
Well, I'm in a demographic.
Exactly, yeah.
Because of my age.
Um, so we've, 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 we've tried to listen as far as what can we, what can we do to, you know, um, they were not big on the masks. You know.
But that'll be required.
We're gonna have that conversation on the ASPO about face shields, we got face shields. And we will see how that works, maybe some of them will do both, we're not, we're not just.
Well, they do steam up, you know, I can, I can, I can see if you wear glasses, it, it could be dangerous.
We, we, we purchased fifty shields, uh, from Spartech, open Sparta, Pat picked them up on, on Friday. And the summer school staff wanted us to have, I did not see any with the monkey, I think some warm. Um.
Some warm, because there's a couple of pictures that's.
Kinda, that. I think, I think people are just finding out what's working for them and what's not.
The comfort level.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the masks with the, the nice see-through, where our staff members had them on, you could see the child, it was great.
She did that.
But by the end of the day, it was so full of water and droplets and everything that I always see.
Yep.
And the shields put so much pressure on your, on your head.
On your neck.
Good. Well, I, I wear shields whenever I'm traveling, so it just, it, it can give you a headache.
There, there are a couple of different options coming out, um, one that Kickapoo is pursuing now, and I have not looked into him yet, but it, it actually rests kind of on your collarbone area. And then it's, it's got a flip up shield. So the rounded shield that sits, you can either flip it down if you're not using it, or you can flip it up and then it comes up. So there's nothing resting on your head, nothing touching your face. So they just ordered one for every staff member, uh, I think Friday was when they ordered.
That sounds, I said not.
So I, I had, um, I had them forward the link to me so we can at least look into it and go from there. But, um, he was pretty impressed when, uh, by the demonstration that he saw, so.
How about the CDC, do they approve?
I, I, I don't, I don't have an answer to that.
Cause I've not seen that.
Um, uh, I think the, the jury is, is still out just because of lack of data, um, on situations where they can use them. Um, so I don't, I don't have an answer for you one hundred percent on that.
Okay. Is that in the budget?
It will be, right? We, 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 there are things that, I mean, we, we've gotta, we've gotta keep, we've gotta keep our staff safe.
That's expensive. Absolutely, and, and they're gonna break, so the ones that I've worn, I've broken several of them already.
Yep. Oh, that's, that was the first response, is a little expensive, you know, because I mean, those, those shields are supposed to be disposable, I mean, they, you know, they are.
Well, some are, some aren't.
And, and it's like you said, somebody said, oh, the heavier ones, you know, I mean, so. I guess, that's it.
That it?
You guys will just keep looking. Going, uh, a motion to adjourn this meeting? The MP, second?
Second.
Are you on the all paper?
Aye.
Aye. Please.
Comes up from the medical communities, community, we're also going to see shifts in that. So we just have to take that with a grain of salt, it's great information to have, but either way, we're gonna have to do, do that. It did just close today, uh, last night, excuse me, but we have not had a chance to really dive into it as a team. Uh, we will do so, uh, on Thursday during the DLT, and so that hopefully we can send out a summary to you guys on what those, what those results, uh, are modeled to. Uh, and now let's bounce to Pat for summer school.
Summer school started today, this was, I don't know why everybody else, it was just awesome.
It was so cool.
You know, it's, it's been, what, four months? Since we've had some kids in, in our building, and it was just cool, you know, maybe the first two kids that came a little early, I'm like, hey, you're the first two kids I've met in Brooklyn. A little early, but, you know, it gets really tough. Uh, so it was cool, I know Jason and John and the whole admin team have been super helpful, planning this as, as I'm coming on new and. Um, and it's, and it's a little different than years past, obviously, but, um, you know, I'll go through all the protocols, we're trying to do, our, our big thing is we're trying to keep people as safe as possible. And that's our big key, you know, we're, we're, we can't guarantee that any, anytime, but we're trying to be as safe as possible. So we came up with, um, procedures and protocols of, you know, like maximum fifteen kids in a class. And if we don't have any that are adding thirteen guys, if it got close to fifteen or over, we split it into two, two rooms. You know, we've got them spread out around the elementary building. Breakfast and, and lunch are brought to the, the kids in their room, they're using different, all the different exits and entrances. You know, just to, to keep the cluster of the kids, you know, apart, keep a small cohort. Um, face covering are strongly encouraged to be worn, um, we're trying social distancing, you know, teachers that I've got into classrooms, they're all giving lessons on hand washing and, you know, it's, it's cool to see that it's just incorporated into PIS, like you teach the expectations of walking in the hall, they're teaching hand washing. Things like that, um, staff have, have face masks, some have, um, we're trying out some face shields. Staff have, have face masks, some have, um, we're trying out some face shields that someone wanted to try so that kids can see their, see their expression and when they read aloud, or it could be useful with, in the special ed classroom, even speech, obviously. We've got Plexiglas in the, the elementary office, so that's to protect the secretary. So we're, again, we're trying all these things. Um, it's like eight noon, which is a little different, and it's, uh, there's no busing, so we don't have to worry about some of those things yet, but it's, it, you know, went really, from my perspective, really well. You know, there's gonna be, what if this, or we didn't think of this type of thing, but really there weren't many. We, we met afterwards to kind of debrief and, I think the biggest thing is some of the materials that, that I pre-K and some of the really young kids use, how do we keep those clean? And the big thing is teachers typically have some of the best ideas. So if I have a salad, I'm like, this is your set of materials, and tomorrow you're gonna get a new set. Just keep rotating it through. You know, there's, they're doing what they always do, staff part, and they're keeping kids safe and, you know, and healthy as much as possible, so. I thought it was a great day. It was just, it was exciting and kind of nerve wracking because Brenda was gone for a while. Somebody asking me a question, but like, I don't know, but I'll find you the answer. How do I log into this for myself or whatever, you know? But it was, it was a good day.
Yep. I did swing by right at the, the beginning of, of the day, and, uh, I, I, I got introduced by one of the teachers uh, to the two groups, but, uh, every kid was just so excited. Um, I, I actually did, you know, a poll. Who was excited to be having just hands shot up, um, within both groups? And so they were extremely excited to be back. Um, and, uh, yeah, it was, it was an awesome day.
Yeah, when I, I think I gave the, the enrollment number, there was a hundred and four, I think, originally, um, you know, since Friday about six, for whatever reason withdrew, and it's only a couple families, so there were three siblings that we decided not to do it. You know, and then some, for various reasons, probably didn't show up today. So there's eighty-seven total today. Obviously, we knew some were gonna be gone for different reasons today as well, so. It's a good, I think a good, good number for any person. Again, it's new. The only other that I know going on right now is, is in Toma with their year round.
Yep. Plus, we did start last week.
Well, they started last week. They started week two of this.
Yep.
Yep.
Pat had the pleasure of interviewing my second grader. And, uh, he was nervous this morning. And I said, well, why are you nervous? He said, well, I'm not sure I'm gonna know anyone. So I really knew everyone in his class, so that was good. Said, are you nervous about the virus though? He said, yeah, a little nervous about that. I said, well, just listen to what they're telling you. You know, and, and when we're our, at home, what we should be doing. So tonight afterwards, and I said, how was it? It was really good. He said, you want to go back tomorrow? Yes. And resounding. So everything, it was, um, really well received from him. Had a good time today. Ecstatic to be back and seeing some friends and some sense of normalcy, but, uh, just appreciate all the efforts. And, uh, keeping the kids safe.
That's, that's good to hear. Have a good one.
Yep.
You know, we can all say it went well, but I think that's the truth.
There were a little biases, I was just saying, I was just saying that.
The kids come back saying, I liked it, wanted to mend it.
Yep.
So I'm at the food co-op this afternoon, giving these things organized. Two parents, as I'm leaving out, separate parents, run, run to me.
Pull your mask up.
They run to me. You know, I just wanted to thank you, Angie. Thank you for school. My kids, it was so great. I mean, one, one, one mom cried. It's like, it was so wonderful. My kids are so happy, you know, and like, well, number one, I didn't do anything. I'm glad that they had a good experience, but this mom was crying. And then, um, a dad came up and he said, you know, my, my daughter just had a fantastic time today. Thank you so much for the, what the district's doing, and so I wanted to share that. Now, as far as middle school and high school, you guys have some students as well.
So we had it set up where the teachers, we greeted the students and showed them around, and, uh, it went completely well. Um, snack was delivered right away, taken to the classroom, and they had a little recess break, and it just was good, it was very good. So, uh, Mr. The Bachman, the orchestra, has a little different schedule where he goes down and greets his students because they're one or two at a time. So, uh, yeah, it was a very clean start, very good. No issues because of the floor waxing, there's a maze for teachers to get. That's a teacher issue, but, no, it was marvelous, I guess, and excellent organization by Pat.
Yeah, we have a really small group of kids for remuneration, so it's, it's actually really easy for us to social distance and, um, create a very safe environment and, um, everybody that had committed back to me, um, that they were coming, showed up. And like John said, I mean, we have a little bit of a maze up here, um, and trying to limit things. I think the teachers, if they wanna make copies, I think they have to come through the library. Uh, because they really can't get too far going to other directions, but, um, you know, get everything ready too, so it's, um, yeah, it went very smoothly. We had a new Mr. Having, he should have taught it today, and, um, he has not taught summer school here before, uh, being new last year, and things seem to go really smooth.
Well, the information that was shared to the board, I, I appreciated, um, you know, what the DLT, is that DLT? What the work that they're doing, the information that was forwarded as far as, you know, what doors and, you know, it's very thought out. And I appreciated seeing that I don't have children in the district, but just, just seeing all of the detail is, it was pretty marvelous. Any else? Alrighty, well, thank you all for that. So the fall planning, we are going to have a, uh, board, I call it an advance. I know they call it a retreat, but I like to call it an advance because you're moving forward. So, um, at that time, we will hypothetically approve, probably approve a back to school plan, knowing that it's fluid. We were talking about trying to do that, uh, end of July, beginning of August, which is coming rather quickly. So, uh, that will herd our, uh, herd us, um, and send out some possible dates that we can do that, and we'll, we're also going to have, um, someone come and speak about horsemanship. And, uh, we're going to do that too. I don't know if you've heard back from that gentleman yet or not. But anyway, so that's a, a work in progress. So I wanted to, to share that as far as fall planning. There have been some other school districts that have, um, administrators have put forward a plan, and the board has rejected the plan. And, um, I don't believe that that's fair, and I certainly hope that we understand that whatever plans put forward, that, um, it is fluid, just like Tom mentioned before. Um, I also would like to request, as far as fall planning, and this isn't just fall planning or summer planning, but we're starting to get some, uh, perhaps board emails from folks. And that's great that people wanna reach out to us and share something. Um, I will always reply when something is sent to the board, and, um, we have new administrators. And so, and whether they're new or not new, um, I am requesting that whatever their concern is, that they first speak to their high school principal, and then speak to the district administrator. So I just want all of you to be aware that if we get something, I will reply. Um, and that is what I'm going to request because, um, as a board, that's how it's supposed to be. So I hope that everyone here will, um, know that people are being replied to and that we're following a chain of command. And I think with COVID, this is more important than ever because we will get, no one is going to be completely happy with any decision that's made. And I just wanted to go through the proper channel so that people know of concerns and, um, everyone's given an opportunity to share the thought process that went behind the decision that was made. So I did want to say that. Um, with that, um, food service meal program, Mike?
Um, yeah, so we are still, you know, serving anywhere between seven and eight hundred meals, um, per day. We're shifting some of those meals to serve students in the classrooms. Um, and I, I cannot emphasize enough how the, the flexibility of, of not only our food service staff, but of our custodial staff and, and, and in the other supporting, um, people of this district to, to take what we think is a good idea and, and actually make it work. Um, you know, it's, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna eat in the room. Okay, they were getting a meal delivered, their siblings are still home, so we still need to deliver that one, but, you know, I mean, and they just, I, I don't know how they do it, but they do it. Yeah, and they, they give me an update that they got it done. And that's pretty much all, you know, they, they point out, you might have a problem here with this. And I said, what are we gonna do? And, you know, we seem to have an answer. So, you know, whether it be Randy, um, with transportation, or Christie's with service, and Terry with, with maintenance, um, and custodial, it's, it's just, just amazing. We are going to continue serving meals and delivering meals through the summer school time period, um, which is August seventh, our August, basically, our seventh. Um, and, and so that, that is a change from the original, we were gonna be done August first. Um, but as we, we felt it was important to keep feeding the students, especially when they were here, um, we decided we would, we would continue that for another week. The, that staff does need a break before we start school then. The kitchen needs a break in that we need to get it cleaned and, and everything, you know, like we do every year, um, waxed and, and polished and everything. So, um, you know, I, I just can't say it enough, that what, what they've been able to do for this community, and them on meals. And, um, the service with a smile, if you wanna say, I mean, they just, uh, it's, it's been really remarkable.
I don't know what we can do, um, to thank these folks, they, you know, the transportation, I, I don't know what that looks like, but I feel like we need to do something.
Yeah, and, and we've been working with Christine and Randy to, to talk about that and, and see what, what, what would, um, be appropriate and appreciated, so we're definitely gonna try to do something.
Well, try, try really hard. Yeah, and once again, I, I just don't know what that means, but, I mean, we just can't thank them enough. And I know we thanked them, but it just seems meaningless. It seems like there should be more. I don't know what it looks like, but. All right, uh, graduation, Jason, and thank you for that email as well, with the information.
Um, hopefully this is the only ever July meeting that I will have to say that this is graduation ceremony week. But we've been working really hard with, um, even, we finished the final details this morning with, um, county health. Um, basically, we submitted a plan, got suggestions back, um, and then we, we finalized every little detail. Um, as I told the admin team earlier, it's probably the most scripted planned graduation ceremony that we've ever had, um, type of thing, um, just because it has to be. And so, uh, uh, so it is this Saturday, nine thirty in the morning, um, weather provided. Before I came here today, I kicked out my, hopefully, last email to parents and graduates. Um, cause any other email would probably be weather related, so hopefully that holds strong. And we shot for early in the morning, um, which looks like a good choice, um, cause I think they're talking low nineties and humid on Saturday. Um, so we're going for, uh, nine thirty, um, Saturday morning. Uh, it is a closed ceremony, so it is restricted to, um, graduates and a limited amount of family members. But the really cool thing is, we've had nearly ninety percent of our graduates commit to participate in the ceremony, um, which you think at the end of July with everything that we've gone through and, um, with situations, I mean, it's just a great number. Um, you know, we're gonna record it for the general public and for family members, and, um, we've just had a lot of people helping out as far as whether it be for music or organization or recording or, um, and obviously, like I said, Vernon County Health has been great as far as, um, making sure we can put together a ceremony that uh, honors these, honors these kids, but at the same time is safe, um, for everybody that comes.
Um, what if a person doesn't have a family member? Are we providing one if they want one?
Well, they're, the family members are not gonna be, the family members are not gonna be a part of the ceremony.
Right.
Um, so we, when we, we offered, um, two seats for, um, each person that's participating. Um, the kids will be, um, seated on the track, lanes one, four, and seven. Which, if you've never known how wide a lane is, it's exactly one meter, just in case you're wondering. Uh, and then, uh, we, uh, the, the family members, um, and so the families, when they committed to participate in the ceremony, told us if they wanted one or two members, um, that were coming with families, so. Um, so we actually, uh, if you went out there today, you would see all kinds of blue Xs all over the bleachers because we have socially distanced people by basically putting down where your body will sit. So, um, and we paired it up with some, but knowing that there may be some that may not wanna sit with the other person or something, we have a few single tens, but, uh, yeah, we've scripted it out. Um, and if you're wondering, uh, to get six feet, it does take more than one row in our bleachers. Um, each row is about two and a half feet, so, yeah. We had to spread it out a little bit, so, um, but we were able to accommodate all those that are coming and as long as the weather holds out, we will have a graduation ceremony this week.
I do wanna, to mention and, uh, bring that back to summer school as well, Jason. Uh, Jason and Pat have been working with the county, um, to submit plans and get recommendations back, and then more recommendations back, and, hey, wait, we thought about this, and, uh, what about this, and have you thought about this? And so, uh, it has been not just a planning process for the administrative team, it's an ongoing, and when I say living and breathing, it has changed. It has changed very recently. Uh, and, and also, uh, our admin team will do, will go a, above and beyond and do anything. Jason, what were you doing this morning? Were you, uh?
I was taping Xs.
You was out there, uh, out there taping Xs.
I talked to some of the summer school kids that came out and walked the track for recess.
Yep. So, um, it, it's just an interesting time, but again, I, I hope that everybody can understand and appreciate what the, what so many people are doing, um, to try to provide kids an experience that they're gonna be, you know, that, 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 that we can be proud of.
Did you get your steps in?
Uh, I got really good steps. I, uh, I will tell you before the meeting, I got a shower. And it was, and maybe it was a trial run. I think I started about nine thirty this morning, so I kinda was doing, I think I was conditioning my body to about Saturday maybe, like.
It, it's all recorded and there will be some speakers.
Yes, we have a salutatorian, baccalaurian, and senior class president who will all be speaking and as well.
Are you speaking?
I, I am not at this point, so, yeah.
It's gonna be hot. We can't have two minutes.
There you go. He's just worried about me going on and on and on.
Oh, thank you for your work. It's complicated as everything is. Uh, summer maintenance, Mike?
The window project is wrapping up. Um, by wrapping up, I mean, they're, they're cleaning up in, we started parking, uh, we, we may get our parking spots back later this week even. We're all excited. Um, you know, they've been staged here since our first full day of, of being closed. Um, or was the first Monday following, um. We, uh, did a great job. We walked the property, we walked in and, you know, pointed out that crack or a little bit of mud on the windows or whatever, and, yeah, and we walked in and they pointed some things out that they encountered. Some pointed some things out that maybe we're gonna wanna take a look at in, in the near future. Um, some, some, again, general maintenance, caucking type issues that, after they pointed out, then every time we got around to another, I'm like, oh, hell, I want even more, you know? Um, through this process, we've had a pair of windows in our, our tech unit area that during the remodel, um, we hooked a couple of holes in, in the wall and, and put a window in. And every time we got in a heavy rain, driving in the right direction, the water just pours in that area. They, they were able to break away from what they were doing and take a look, and it was a very similar problem created differently, but a very similar problem, and were able to get that, and, and were really hoping that that now is taken care of and sealed up. There were some just limitations on, on that fix for that. If you notice, the planter got knocked out. I don't know how long. I don't know how long that cracked. Every time I walked by, I'd be like, how are we gonna get that fixed? And, um, it, it just, in looking at it, it was not something we were gonna be able to put back. And, and so they were able to knock that out for us. And they think they've got a solution for the bee that comes out, that cap that's always off gilted. It drives me crazy. They think they've got a solution for that, that they're gonna replace out. And, and I can't say enough how well what Mark and Johnson have done in working with us. And, and, you know, I really am happy with the product. As we speak, you know, we've had some really heavy rains in the last month and a half, two months. What they have worked on has not allowed any water. We did have some water areas that they didn't have. And there's some window blazing that weren't part of this project that we had a little bit of water come in. You know, that, that we know we have to address. But I do believe this was a great fix. The building is nice and clean, meaning the outside and seals that brick was, was well past its due date for sealing. It's, it's gonna be really good.
When, when will it be finished?
I would say in a week. Yeah, no, and I would say in a week. I mean, they were, I think they're done constructing or reconstructing the landfills and everything. Today, they think I was sealing it. So, and cleaning. And like I said, they're in cleanup mode and, and we'll, and we'll be out of here shortly. Other projects we've been working on, I mean, the custodial staff has been, you know, we're, we're changing their daily operations, the way they've done things for the last twenty, twenty-five years. So we've been meeting, see some new equipment out there, there's more new equipment coming and a lot of stuff back where, um, you know, all to get us ready for September. Again, as I started their meeting, I think it's first and foremost, what everybody has recognized and understands is nobody wants to do this, change the way we're doing it. But we know we have to. So we're gonna go forward with that and, and keep that in mind. And they, and they did, they approached that meeting well, they approached today with the summer school well. And, yeah. As you can see, if you look around, the, the second set of shelves, the next set's coming in Wednesday. They haven't placed those into place. They're, they need to know, are they supposed to go more to the left and cover up the hole in the center or whatever? So they just want some, some direction before they set them into place by them. But they're gonna look very, very nice. They, they went together, they're strong, they're, they're just, they're well put together. I asked Cody, I said, are they gonna be a problem to move like that? He said, like, they are so bolted together that he said, it just takes a lot of people to move them. But he said, other than that, it's, they, you know, it's not like they're, they're very awkward or anything. Um, they're just getting through the hallways, getting through the, as you can tell, we're in the hallway waxy. I think classrooms are all done.
I didn't, yeah, I think we're done. Most of this building is getting pretty close. I think they have the downstairs hallway, but they need to get done. But, yeah, I think middle school is pretty close to being finished up.
In putting, uh, putting summer school in August, obviously impacted the, the elementary staff. They adjusted accordingly. And then, of course, we start the gym this week. So, you know, uh, yes, or early next week. And the elementary gym got a fresh coat of paint and it's going to look so nice, so nice, brighter. It was well past due, that was twenty-five year old. So it's gonna look so good. So we're, we're doing a lot of stuff though, that's great.
And then the tech ed area.
Tech ed area's been cleaned up. We've got a nice report of conditions and what we need to consider moving forward and what our next steps, we don't have a proposal for that yet. There's some things we need to decide and talk about. But, um, that's on the agenda.
These shelves here, do you know when?
So I'm not exactly sure with what her plans are as far as when those get there, I think the books are gonna go on there. And then some of those are coming out, I just can't tell you for sure all of them.
Sure.
But yeah, it's gonna look good to do this line when, when we're back up and running.
Any other questions? So thank you for all of that. Board report, WASD legislative update. I would say that, you know, I'm reading about all the unknowns. I'm sure you're all reading the same thing. I don't know if there's a point in which administratively, if you want us to send something in support of something that might be helpful, a statement of some sort. We would be happy to do that. I believe it's our obligation legislatively to promote, you know, best practices, funding that you feel we should be promoting to better serve our students and community. So let us know. Board recognition, do you want me to? Okay, Robert, um, I'm, are you there, Robert?
Yep, I'm here.
All right. This is a certificate of achievement. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards awards level four to Robert and I for demonstrating a high level of commitment to Wisconsin public school students by participating in WASD professional development opportunities. This was issued October twenty-second of two thousand nineteen. So we would like to thank you for your, your service and for all that you do for our students over the twenty-two years?
Yeah, something like that.
Twenty-three years of board. So thank you so much for your dedication to our community and our district. And Beth will have this with her at your convenience to come and pick it up. But we wanted to thank you for that. Very much appreciated. Do you want to say anything?
It's been a pleasure to work with a lot of great people on the board to do the best we can for our kids. So it's not really a job, it's, it's fun. And then I can pick on Tom later.
Thank you for your servant leadership. The next item is the board workshop, and I already spoke to that a little bit. I don't know how many, it'll be probably a two hour evening is what we're thinking. And it'll be soon.
Yeah, when we have dates, we'll throw them out to all both the admin and the, and the board and we'll see what's, what fits.
So if you have any absolutely not stuff, do you want them to send them to you or not yet? Not yet, excellent. All right, with that.
Move your adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all. That's exactly what it is. You all said from this point forward, Angie can only have an.
Although the admin team has learned that we're done, I'll just get up and walk.
Can they see us? Can they hear us?
Can you let me hit them?
Brendel's unusually quiet.
There they are, there they are.
And that's all I got to say about that.
Best thing I ever heard.
Um, so, uh, basically, tax collections, we'll know more in a week how they came. But, um, they're still trying to figure out exactly where the state's gonna finish and what they protect for next year. And we may be required to do a budget repair bill. There are historically reasons and times where that does become the issue, but we're not there yet. So until the governor's office starts that process, legislature is really not, not moving forward. With that, there is some additional funding that we will be budgeting for, for what we're gonna call asset funds or Department of Care's Act, I believe, that will provide us some additional funding to help us meet the needs as we define what those are. So that could be PPE needs, that could be cleaning and procedural needs, instructing students and providing mental health services. There's, there's a whole long list of, of things that would be eligible for this. And as an administrative team, as a, you know, working with the DLT, with the school board, we'll be determining what those are and what we'll be budgeting as well. Anything else that we discussed?
That's pretty much it. You talked about school supplies a little bit as well.
Yep, we talked about school supplies, maybe trying to approach that in a different way. I hope Pat's, Pat's got it in his court now. I, I followed it back and forth with Brenda as, as long as I could. So, that, that knows what happens at an elementary school. That's a lot more than me. He's better to make those decisions.
Any other discussion about that? All right, thanks, Mike. Um, the next item is District Leader's Twitter COVID-nineteen updates on the school fall and fall planning.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll go ahead and, and really I wanna just describe kinda where we are in the planning process. We do have a, a new administrative team that we're extremely excited about and to go and really get to know each other and, and how the process and procedure was going to work moving forward. I'm extremely excited about the work that we have done. This last week, we assembled the DLT, so the district leadership team, and gave them a task of going and seeking feedback based upon a number of different things of local, of what some local schools' plans are at this point. And I'll be very clear that that means at this point and at, at this moment because this planning process is, has been long and arduous for many administrators to this point. And it has been flipped on its head multiple times. So what, what we are really intending to do is, is seek that feedback from our staff to really give us their lens, right? It's for me to look at it as a district administrator, I'm looking at it through my lens. The principals are looking at it through their lens, all administrators looking at it through their lens. But we need that teacher and staff input. Okay, if we do this, what does that mean for all of these other subgroups? And so we are, I'm very excited about meeting with them. We're meeting every week at this point. And we'll meet this after, this Thursday in the afternoon. And so I'm excited to hear that feedback. I do know that they are soliciting feedback, as I have received some personal emails. And, you know, with some, some very clear, hey, here are my thoughts about what we should be doing. And I, and I love that. I really do like people being upfront, honest about what they're thinking and feeling. And I definitely feel like we're going to get some very true responses, very honest responses, especially in a time when even individually, and we've talked about this, you know, we're making decisions for a district and parents and, and teachers. And, and that, that comes with a great responsibility. But it also is, it's, it's, um, when you're having conversations within your own households, within your own families about what is the right thing to do for us even, you know, what are, when, when the right thing even for, for, when we have our own views that are, when the latest information are moving and turning and what that means. It's, it's, it's going to be a living, breathing process and it's going to be a living, breathing plan. And so that's what I would tell you as, as the, as the board is that just be prepared for whatever we present to you to change. Because the odds of it staying the same are almost zero whenever we do end up having that, that, that plan in place. And so again, I'm excited about the, the opportunity. We also have put out a Q and A form for teachers that they can fill out as many times as they want that would put, that puts out questions for any questions, comments, concerns, ideas that teachers have. It populates into a document that all the administrators can see. And then we will be, we will be taking time at each admin meeting to go through the hot topics. The, okay, if we have four teachers that reached out with a question about this, we know we need to answer that. That will be answered in a FAQ document that all teachers can see with the answer in a certain color with a date on it. So that we can say, as of this moment, here is what we are doing. But again, I know that that does not bring any comfort to that.
All staff, all staff.
Oh, oh, that was sent to all staff, yes, sorry, yes. Thank you, Beth. Um, it was sent to all, so that is part of an all staff effort to get any feedback that they, that they can. So the DLT is also soliciting feedback, but that was sent to all staff so that they can see that. Another thing that we started over the last two weeks, and you guys hopefully all got that DLT summary, which was an agenda, it was in a summary of what we talked about and what, where we kinda left that meeting. And we talked about what other schools are thinking, what the community's thinking, what, what CISA is thinking. And so again, you guys should have received that DLT summary. And we actually sent it to all staff. And that was one thing that the teachers were kind of asking for was, okay, you have these DLT meetings, then what? Like what, what happens there? And, and so we did send that out to you guys. And so I hope that you guys saw that and we're gonna continue that after each DLT meeting. So I'm excited about the process and I really, I really love the feedback that we're already gaining on that. And I'm gonna bounce a little bit around and then I'm gonna throw it to Pat for summer school. We did send out that, I'm gonna bounce down to D here for a second. Are you okay with that? Okay. Because what we are going to be basing a lot of our conversation on this week is the parent survey that we sent out. We received, and I believe the number, the latest number was eight hundred and forty-four responses, which puts us over two thirds of our student population. So you, you normally expect a return rate of surveys from between thirty and thirty-five percent is considered okay, right? That's considered okay. You've got good results so you can start making some decisions. So to receive over two thirds of our student population is just unbelievable. And that should give us some pretty interesting data. Now, again, while we are going to be coming and saying, are.